So I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is Board of Selectmen, or should say Select Board, I'm gonna start trying to reuse that term. Ah, well. It is, I suppose, the Board of Selectmen Work Session for Thursday, January 23rd, 2000... I'm sorry, reading this right here. Thursday, January 23rd, 2020.
Uh-huh. Flashback.
Flashback, yes, and so on. A few announcements, the meeting is being recorded by the recording book for record-keeping. Ms. DeGant has also asked and granted permission to record this meeting. Is there anyone else who wishes to record the meeting? No one indicated. The attendance sheet, if you need...
I don't have it.
You have it, okay. So there is a attendance sheet, but you're on it, so we're all set. And the purpose of this meeting is almost entirely to review the budget by department. And with that, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Town Administrator, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the Department Heads for making the time today, I appreciate that. This is the third consecutive Thursday where we'll cover the different departments. We've broken into three sections, going through the different changes within the budget, and just overall questions, concerns, or comments around it as well. This year, we've asked the Department Heads present for their Thursday or Selectment Group meeting, just to answer any of the detailed questions that might come out of it. But I'll certainly lead, like I have in prior meetings, going through the different budgets. So for today, we're gonna lead off with the police. So she's on page seven. Oh, cool. We were about to go for sure to the end. Do you wanna cover... Do you wanna kick it off, Jack? We can go to the end if you want.
Um, yeah, I thought we were gonna continue, in fact, yeah.
Yeah, if that's what you're ready for, we'll do that. My apologies, we did have two, the debt service and the classified, which carried over from the last Thursday meeting. We should, we'll go to page 18, so toward the very end here, the budget. So, on page 18, we start about halfway down with debt service. Debt service is a cost that obviously is incurred based on prior year's obligations that we've taken out. I'll leave it at that, and I'll actually just hand it over to our new Treasurer, Jack to comment on it.
Before Jackie continues, there was an email that went out that was about budget updates and corrections that I had at the last meeting, I just wanted to distribute it here as well, because it does include the debt.
Just something new that we haven't before?
This is the email that you would have received last week.
Last week, okay.
Yeah, it's just a printout of it.
Great, thank you.
Because it does apply to the debt, those numbers under debt interest should be negative numbers, they're actually reductions in the budget. And then, just to get the pages that you're going to, you had asked about at the last meeting, to have a breakdown of the unclassified, just so I just wanted you to have those documents as well.
So what we're doing here with the updates, corrections sheet that just was distributed, rather than redistribute a budget mid-process, another version, we talked about version control in the first meeting that we had, we're writing down these changes that we will make at the next version that gets distributed. So as we talk through changes, talk through things that we've identified that we need to make edits to, this is sort of how we're tracking it for the time being.
And there are some changes that we've already talked to that are not in here, but they will be in the budget, correct? The one I'm thinking of was that we talked about the library.
The library will be on the next update.
That sort of thing will be, even though it's not here in this one, we've been collecting them, and will be in them.
Yep, living documents.
And that one is published for the 27th, if I remember.
The next updated version for the budget.
The next version for the budget is the 27th, right?
It's expected to have the Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen recommendations on that budget, it would be level two of the budget.
Mm-hmm. So that's when the new budget, that, right, and that will be the new budget.
So after we've gone through our process, that's definitely...
And that's the 27th.
That's what we're shooting for, if we need to make an adjustment, we have a little flexibility, but that's... Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so if you have any questions on the budget updates, corrections, please let us know. If not, I could move right to the debt service couple. So I can sort of give you a little bit of a frame around that. Jack, if you have anything you want to mention additionally around how the debt service works and what's within this section?
Uh, yeah, just within the section you can see, I mean, the couple, the first lines, both under the principal section and the interest section, you can see the older borrowings, they're reduced a bit because we're getting near the end of those loans, and then conversely, the newer bonds, the ones that were just recently done, that you're all aware of, were done prior to me arriving, but those obviously are now ramping up, and those payments will be coming due for next fiscal year, so that's where you see the reductions and the increases. The, probably the largest decreases for the debt service, the temporary loan line, which was $200,000, that was reduced considerably now that all of the borrowings are replaced and the bands and the notes are all completed, so that's why that's been reduced so much.
Would you leave in $10,000 there anyway?
Yes, there's, potentially, we may need to do a statehouse note, there's one portion left of the school loan project. Exactly, yeah, that's pending the final audit, so that, depending on how that finishes, I would need to use that.
It is what it is.
And we have detailed spreadsheet that was provided last week, thank you. And we know that Jackie's still working on some of the formulas and things such as that in there, but that's the backup to provide the standard.
That was a nice job, too, I appreciate that. Getting that, when did we get that, three or four days ago? Something like that? Very good.
No other comments or questions for this timing on that? You can go on to the last page of classified. Yeah, Jackie, I don't know if you wanna sort of frame this one?
Oh, sure. I mean, obviously, the biggest increase is the Essex County Retirement, which, that's a fixed plus, I mean, we get that letter appropriated from PARAC for the Essex Regional Retirement, so that has increased our assessment by that much, which, you know, isn't a surprise. The other...
When we talk about various line items, I find it very helpful if we specify the, sort of like, 51,700 or something like that, then it's very easy to find out which line of the document...
Oh, okay.
Can it help?
Yeah, yeah, no, of course, yep. So the, yeah, so the first one, the 51,700 is the Essex County Retirement, that's what I was referencing, and that's obviously a significant increase. The other line items, although there was an increase for the, and this again is 51,730 in line, I'm referring to the current line, for Maya, the health benefit trust, there is an anticipated increase that we received a quote on, although the appropriation, you see, has stayed the same. It has been determined based on the analysis that was in on that account, it was overbudgeted, it appears, so the increase is built in, but it didn't actually increase the appropriation.
Does that automatically roll over to next year? Or is it, that was an article, and it's just commending to roll it over to next year?
It's not an article, it's part of the budget, so whatever doesn't get used closes out. A lot of times, it's used as special town meeting transfers for partial of it, but it does close out.
But basically, savings from this year will be applied or increased to next year's...
Well, no, it closes out until the fund down.
It closes out.
It closes out, because the budget closes out.
It might play a part in increasing the free cash a little bit.
Okay, oh, I see, so you're saying just because it was overbudgeted, maybe the amount that it is will be enough to absorb the increase.
Exactly.
Now I'm clear, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Since we have a stoppage, if I could just go back to the retirement, the amount of increase is substantial. Do we have a feeling for why it's gone up? In other words, and there's many factors, I appreciate, but if, for example, somebody told me that the Retirement Board changed its assumed return on investment from 8.8, and 7 and 3/4 to 7 and 1/2, I mean, I could very quickly understand that that has an effect, and if somebody told me that that represents half of what we have here, it would... Do we have any feeling for why it is up? And for those that are listening, we were at 1.2 million, and we're adding 140,000, so it's a good number.
No, it's not a good number, it's a big number.
It's more than 10%.
And the issue is, it's a big number on a big budget item. In other words, if you increase something that's $100 by 50%, $200, you still wanna understand why it's 100% increase, but the impact is very slight. Things like pension, though, which is such a big dollar amount, 1,200,000, a 10% increase in that represents a lot of money.
Is that a big change, that increase from what we had last year?
It's not a big change, I actually have a document that would show the numbers in terms of the percent of increase each year, which I can send along to you, but it does, what plays into it, it plays, is all the historical salaries, the current salaries, but also, and I think probably the biggest reason for the jump is they're working to the fund at OPEB right now, and so every year, we've been seeing a little bit more than the 8% that we're kind of used to.
This includes the OPEB?
They're funding their OPEB through...
What, who was OPEB when we funded it?
The retirement system's OPEB, they have their own...
So they have eight employees or something of that nature, and they're...
No, for the, for...
All the retirees?
All the retirees, too, which is...
For the existing line, in other words.
Yeah.
So this sounds like we're double paying. We're building our OPEB, and they're building an OPEB?
They have an OPEB as well, that's part, that has to do with our numbers, and we had Parker Elmo?
Elmore.
Elmore Parker, sorry, from Odyssey, who's that OPEB representative who explained it to us, and he handed out some documents on that that might be useful, but in terms of what the numbers are that they're using every year, until, I think it was the year 2035, at which point then they've all started to benefit from the payoff of it.
We're not gonna get all the answers today. I think this would be helpful, to have a better discussion about this, so we understand...
It's a schedule that...
Could you say, we can prepare something that shows the difference where the OPEB obligation is?
It's not something that we prepared, it's something that's been prepared by the retirement system through Odyssey, that they provide to us, that we can get that through.
Let me offer this question.
Okay.
If that has changed, what the retirement system is doing as far as trying to help us with OPEB, does that mean that we should stop putting money in our trust?
No, they're not helping us with OPEB, our actuary is our actuary, they have their own actuary, that they're...
But for the same employees, you're telling me?
It's not for the same employees, it's for their employees, it's for statewide...
I understand their employees, a dozen people. That's, there's a director, there's a this, there's a clerk, there's a whatever, okay, so it's a dozen people, is, that's not the OPEB we're talking about, you're saying?
It can't be just the OPEB, because it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, yeah, so I don't, yeah.
They haven't been saving enough aside themselves to cover the obligations their committed to.
Well, they have to, but I'm trying to pick it up, because...
But he's saying that we, if they're our employees that are already on our list, our former employees, I hear what you're saying, and I don't know how that works.
We'll find the answer.
We need to understand.
We'll find that answer.
Yep.
To find out if we should not have to worry about our, the money we've been collecting, don't collect it in retirement and as a separate trust.
The answer today, I can tell you, is definitely no, though, it doesn't change anything that our actuaries are telling us right now, that we need to be putting aside.
Okay, so then we need to know what it is that... What is funded, okay.
And it's not the 315% of that.
No, no, it's also based on the schedules that are sent over by the Treasury's Office of the current perils that are going on as well.
So a piece, though, of it.
Thank you.
I will look forward to some clarification of that, too.
It's confusing.
I like Nick's opening statement, it kind of sounds like we're double paying or something.
There was a couple of the Finance Committee members were also at the meeting, and, you know, and it's something that they do for a living, these actuaries as well, Shay was one of the people, and he had a great understanding of it, so even if you wanted to try to grab him and talk to him about it, he could explain it much better than I.
The meeting was one where the Retirement Board, not the Board, but the Retirement Organization, was giving updates to various towns' members?
No, that wasn't the one that I'm referring to, although that's something that the Treasurer frequently would participate in at those meetings. This is one that our representative from Odyssey came and talked to us about OPEB and what to expect with OPEB, why it benefits us to be funding it, that's why the Finance Committee went from 100,000 to 300,000, which also had a big impact on us going from a double A to a triple A community. So it was a different meeting, but yes, the Retirement System would also come out, and they would be willing to talk to people, too, they do do that on occasion.
And give us a feel for why our numbers are, why our numbers are up, and what are the factors that drove it? As I said, for example, if they changed their target for return on investment or whatever, it'd be very interesting to know those things, thank you.
Well, our Finance Committee is working hard to try to get from behind the eight ball with our own OPEB. They went from 100 to 300,000, like you said.
Right.
And they may try to do the same thing again this year in terms of an increase, because we're behind the eight ball, and they'd like to see us get out from behind it.
That's worth mentioning, almost every city in town chooses behind that eight ball.
No question about it. There are a whole bunch of towns that have been sitting back saying, you know, the state's gonna have to fix this, but the fact of the matter is that it's too big a number, and the state can't fix it, probably, but...
Well, there are some things the state might do to mitigate the size of it, by changing some laws or that, but we don't know that's the case right now, we need to deal with the laws as they are, and what the actuarial tells us.
And the numbers that they are.
I think that was early talk and early speculation, but since then, it's been pretty clear that the state's not gonna step in and fix the OPEB problem, that it's gonna, it's gonna afford for people to stay on the schedules.
Okay, well, that's the way we've been acting, is that it's not gonna happen?
And I think when we put together the financial policies, we also put an accelerated plan in it, with that going with the Retirement System, as they fund, as they complete funding their system in 2000, I wanna say 2035, it could be 2033, at that point, the money that we're paying towards retirement is gonna go towards OPEB, so that we become on an accelerated payment system.
Let me see if I can translate. The Retirement System has tried, has been trying to get fully funded, and in part because the state law says it's gonna have to do that, and that target date of 2028, 2030 kept moving, but you're reminding me that apparently our target system, our Retirement System, is to be fully funded by '35. Good, that's a given, new information. They're concerned about something about OPEB, and they're saying, well, once you get fully funded, we're still gonna charge you a lot of extra money every year because we're gonna fund OPEB. That's the translation of what I think I heard you say, is that true?
Oh, not the Retirement System, that say, our retirement assessment drops.
Oh, 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 then we will increase our 300,000, all right, thank you. Thank you, you clarified, thank you.
And that gives us a lot of points with the bond rating system.
Well, I was just gonna make the statement that the fact that we're working pretty diligently to get around this problem, I think that has a lot to do with our bond rating and interest rates that we're paying on loans and our...
The interest rates, one piece.
Hinkston, who am I talking about? The Otters, yeah. I mean, they like that stuff, because they can see us trying to get ahead of the game, rather than ignoring it, like we'd like to do. Thank you.
Next category that we go down through the classified is the insurance. So if those, you see a 5% increase across the board.
Oh, yeah, these numbers are all 5% increase.
That was based on a conversation that you had with Maya, in terms of what the expectation is in their recommendation for the budget.
We did that, yeah, they came in pretty early in my tenure, we sat through a very large binder, page for page, going over the policies we have with town, and we incorporated the recommendations for what increases we'd see in insurance.
But the actual costs have not yet been determined, we're budgeting in anticipation of what we'll get as a bill.
Yes.
We've actually been in pretty good shape with Maya over the last couple of years.
Last year was a big decrease.
Yeah, big decrease.
Yeah.
We'll find out, yeah, right there.
Yeah, we'll find out, yeah.
And then last, we just go to the last, the budget's in '20, other raise and appropriate. There are some increases requested in that.
Can you speak to those requested increases, 15,000, 100,000, 15?
So we then, basing the, last year, we also did the unemployment and the fire, police remedy at 15,000, basically, just been building those up right now, based on what they're getting used at, it's kind of arbitrary. The 100,000 for salary reserve, oh, I'm sorry, for compensated absences, is just there as being a placeholder, we actually, what is salary reserve?
Kathy, could you go back to the first one? So we're budgeting 15,000, but there's no requesting an additional 15, so are we anticipating that to double?
What, about 59,601 or 59,600?
59,601.
Okay.
So on 59,601...
No, that's actually a good point on that, what you're saying, is that's completely arbitrary, I would say that it should just be a total, it was level funded last year, it wasn't level funded, I'm sorry, when this budget was copied over, it took last year's numbers and carried it over. This should be a decision in terms of if it stays at the, if we keep that at level funded, then I don't think we need to request the additional 15,000. If we're putting, one way or another, we'd be putting 15,000 in it.
I don't see where there's an additional, it shows 0%.
Because it's showing it in the red there.
Oh, right.
So this is actually a section that was new to the budget last year, and based on what you're saying, I agree 100%, that it actually shouldn't be showing a level budget there.
But the concern, if anything, is that expenses year-to-date are 15,000, so whatever we budgeted last year, we've already used, so...
It's, this is part of the municipal reporting, and I can override this going forward, so that it's showing what it's doing, and what happens is it's showing it as an expense, because it's getting transferred out, but there's actually fund balances, and I think the fund balances are on the attached pages around this. Yeah, so the Unemployment Fund, as of 1231, had $42,000, and it, 10,000 was spent in FY20 year-to-date right now, so that's why we're looking at additional 15,000.
So these are, this is not a, this is a budget item, it's not a warrant?
It's not, that was the change over that happened last year, but now it's getting, it got, because it came in as a budget or, as a budget article, budget, I am, sorry.
Why not, yeah?
It's, it looks, it doesn't look clear here. So this would be a change that, and it guess depends on how you wanna see it, if you wanna see it carried over in the level funded budget, or if you wanna make a decision on it each year on the budget notes as being an additional item request, and my recommendation is that it shows up as a budget note, as an additional request each year, based on what's being used and what's in the fund.
But the fund goes away because it's a budget item.
The fund, the money gets, it's a line item, it gets raised and appropriated. Once it gets raised and appropriated, it gets transferred into a fund which stays year after year. There's special laws that allow these type of funds that happen with the municipal modernization, and we voted on those back in the 2016, '17, when those laws were going into place. So there are the three funds right now, that are unemployment, compensated absences, and police, fire, and so it's a matter of building...
I was not aware, I was not aware of this transfer effect. So you put it in the budget, and then during the fiscal year, we transfer money from it into a permanent, like warrant article, fund, that doesn't go away at the end of the year.
Yes.
So it can build if you have...
It can build, yes.
And in this case, it can.
Because they feel often like slush funds, so we do have to be careful.
They're not slush funds, because they can only be used for these very specific purposes. In fact, the Unemployment Fund can only be used to spend to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yes.
And police, identity, fires, right there as well.
The point is, is there's money sitting in there for only that purpose, perhaps, but there's, it is a certain amount of resources that we have...
Right.
That can be kind of slushed around to protect us from some unexpected thing. I'm not saying it's bad, but it's something that we do need to understand how much is there.
What do you mean, slush around, being transferred to another line item?
Well, she just said that you can't do that.
No, I know, I'm a pro of the slush funds, and I feel very comfortable with the line item, I'm very specific for that purpose.
Maybe it might be helpful, so just current balance as of the end of this calendar year '19, was 4,206,605 for the Unemployment Fund, 10,005,630 was spent during the fiscal '20, so that's sort of the tug and pull of the number that's in there.
I think, I think that's important, though, if we're gonna have this as a budget item, and we have a certain amount already in some fund, this is new, this is a new kind of thing, that we, somewhere in our reporting here, when we're looking at the budgets, can see the 10,000, what was year-to-date, which is, which you have that column, year-to-date, but also what is in that, what I call the slush fund, but what is in that bucket? What you've already transferred into that bucket that will be there, if we don't spend it, it'll be there next year already.
I can change the way this is, this is based on the municipal report, it won't look anything like this, but I would recommend for going further, because what you were saying is correct, is that for the FY21 level funded budget, those are zeroed out there, and it still goes through as a request, therefore, you're making decisions on whether to put money into those funds based on the current balances.
This is pretty confusing, you might...
It is, I can make it easier to, because it looks like, yeah, we did budget it.
If you can clean that up, and we'll discuss it next time around, that'd be good.
One question, our procedures over the last year, or two, whatever it is, at the end of the year, do we transfer everything that, let's do one line item, do we transfer everything that's remaining in the Unemployment Insurance Fund into this bucket that goes on forever, or do we decide how much we want to put into that bucket at that point?
No, it goes, it goes into this fund, into this account, at the beginning of the year, it's transferred into the fund.
Beginning of the year.
At the beginning of the year, on July 2nd.
Into this bucket, this slush fund bucket?
Not a slush fund.
Not a slush fund, yeah.
The bucket, it goes in the bucket.
Unless you consider...
Okay, so, that's why it shows 50,000, because in the...
Well, the reason he's doing that is we don't like slush funds. We don't like slush funds.
So Kevin, since it shows, like in FY20, year-to-date expenses is 15,000, those actually aren't the year-to-date expenses, they were what Kevin said.
Yeah.
Right, and so I did try to account for that in terms of the notes on the above guidelines, where I said what the balances were as of 1231, and what's been spent to date.
So reasons why they're jumping up so, like the compensated absences, there was 40,000, it looked like appropriated last year, and now we're requesting 100,000?
So I don't have my reports that actually show, there was a balance in that account already, so there was, it went up to maybe 100,000 this year, and then it's been spent down, and we actually have more retirements that we're expecting that we need to make sure we have, and then we wanna make sure there's money in that fund.
So maybe the retirements drove this, because the money had been...
Oh, the retirements definitely drove the 100,000 right now, you know, in terms of putting in a request for that. When the fund was first started, it was a warrant article before, for, I think you had asked last week about it.
Could you perhaps explain why we moved from the warrant article to the budget, and made it back to what looks like a warrant article?
Well, it's not, it's not a warrant article, but it's the way that the state has asked people to take a look at their books and do the municipal modernization, they created the laws...
Asked us to, we don't have to, but they asked us, we chose to do it.
You don't have to, it's clean, it makes it clear for other people.
Okay, we may talk about this in the future, sure, good, next.
Yeah, I'd just like you to clean it up, and we can talk about it somewhere down the road.
What I'll have for you is a summary of each of the funds and how they're working in terms of their, and then we should probably get used to just providing that as part of the budget process.
You do, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing on 59,610, OPEB and so on, why isn't that shown across, is that not part of our budget, or is that a separate warrant?
Because these are here, are the items that are raised and appropriate, and historically here, the stabilization, capital stabilization, and OPEB have all been funded to free cash.
Gotcha, okay. So we don't budget them in the regular one, we end up transferring in to create the balances?
Right, but once the town meeting happens, it goes in here, then moves on, it kind of just, you have to show the process for the auditors and the books.
Those are, again, I don't wanna have everybody spend undue amount of time, but those are the kinds of... those are the kinds of notes that sometimes would be helpful for anybody looking at this. Makes good sense to me, and I totally support the policy of being moderately aggressive in our OPEB transfers. But again, maybe if we do some of this, it'll look a little different, but I think a note explaining that typically this is funded not as an operating budget item, but as a transfer at free cash.
One of the discussions a year ago, when the FinCom said, "Let's go to three hundred thousand to pay the OPEB," that was because there was a fair amount of free cash, and that's where that money came from, without of free cash, I think, that's why they agreed to do it then.
Yeah, I mean, there was, I think it was more coincidence, there was a good amount of free cash that year. The idea is still that, that in order to meet our obligations, we needed to increase the amount. And that's why it became part of the initial policies that those numbers, in fact, there's supposed to be a certain percent of the bottom line of the budget.
Yep, okay.
Good conversation, we'll get some additional information for you from that. We want to turn to the police, page seven. We hope Chief and Kathy can answer any specific questions that may come up regarding it.
Sure.
One of the things I'll point out, that you're all aware, but I'll just say that last year, there was a process undertaken where two police officers were added to the team. It's allowed us more consistency, as I understand, we operate in three shifts, three on, three on, and two in the midnight shift. And the additional officers have allowed us to have two benefits. One, brought down the overtime costs associated with it, because we have full-time staff that's able to fill those vacancies, and the two, we've, just more general, there's more people available to fill those slots when needed. And the police department, there's questions regarding how that's worked, they can certainly address it more directly than I can, as I'm learning about it over the last few weeks, but, and they've lived it the last year. But it's certainly been an addition, there's been a couple changes under Chief's tenure, where we've added staff, which we want to, so it's significant for the department, appears to be a good benefit to the team, to the town. Some of the costs associated, you'll see in the increases around staffing, are associated with just that, it's now identifying those costs as they've become, training, for example, things of those natures now, there's two more officers in addition to the training line item, that's the vehicle of it. That being said, I won't necessarily bounce around here, I'll just kind of go down there.
Can I make a comment on that point? And I think that's, it needs to be part of this discussion. My understanding, last year, was in agreement with the FinCom, that we would add two people for a budget-neutral change. That is to say, the two people will be essentially funded by savings and overtime, whatever else, such that the budget would not increase.
Correct. Overtime is supposed to pay for that, I think.
Some of what I read here, in the additional, overbook guideline things, for example, says that we added the people, and we have additional costs, and we need to increase our budgets to do those things. That's the way I read it. Let's go through the budget, and let's see if we can explain how my read is wrong, and that we are still budget-neutral, having added two people, but saved on overtime or whatever else for the savings that we were after. Okay.
Well, I mean, I think we're talking about salaries and wages, I mean, we could probably address that right now. Captain, I'll let you speak to it.
Well, last year when we presented the budget, just again, we also presented our forecast for the next four years regarding the two-man increase. And in those projections, we're still, the budget that you see presented before you is still underneath that guideline that we said we were going to be at for this year. When we projected the two-man increase, we did it for a neutral period for this coming year, but we also figured it out for a five-year period. Is it, is it going to be cost-neutral compared to what? That's the question, do you know what I mean?
Okay, the question, I think it's very easily answered.
Yeah.
The number of people that we had as full-time officers last year, and what it would cost over the next few years with those people.
Yep.
Versus adding two people, and what it would be.
Okay.
Instead.
And the projections were roughly one point six million for this year? Are our numbers...
Actually, I have to admit, I was not familiar with the fact that it showed the projections out. I thought that it was, it was neutral for this year and going forward was the intent. I didn't know that there was, some part of that was not part of neutral.
Going forward, for example, just a, just a quick recap of it, is if we went forward with going by our old budgeting system, would we...
The way to say it is, if we went forward without adding two full-time officers, then...
Then, then it would be one-five-three-zero, one million five hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly.
Okay, and what is it now?
And now it is at about one-five-nine-eight. So there is an increase, but, but the thing is, is we don't know what the savings is going to be.
A budget, when we proposed this for the two offices, we didn't know, it was basically to reduce the overtime cost, which was a two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, pretty close to that. And that's what FinCom and we worked on over the last two years. So we came, when the captain came up with the proposal for the two offices, we looked at how we would reduce the overtime cost by alternating specific shifts, moving offices around to adjust the training and accordingly. So the numbers you see at one-sixty-eight for the overtime this time is the same as we had last year. But that's still a flowing document, because we're still trying to figure out where we're looking at through this year so far, and how much cost savings we can have overall. Our projection, as we indicated, for, over the five-year span, was supposed to be at one point six billion for this year, for twenty twenty-one. We anticipate coming in less than twenty twenty-one at five hundred and ninety thousand, but also there's a seventeen thousand dollar increase in the captain's budget because of his promotion that was not increased. We took that hit out of that overtime amount. So to say, "How much are we going to spend in overtime?" We don't know. We know that we've been frozen for the last two years at the same amount, and we're using that to offset the costs accordingly. But we're still under what our projections are going to be, and what our projections were going to be for this year as well. So we're right on target, we're on target this year to come within our budget specs. So the process is working. How do we match all the numbers to everything? That has, we have to go through the year, and then into next year to determine where we're actually going to need the specific number changes. Right now, we're at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in overtime, all right, based on the budget. But that could be drastically reduced after we see this year. We're already seeing a reduction in that amount already. But we don't have, it's, because of the uncertainty and the way the shifts are working on the overtime amounts, it's a flowing budget.
How much time, Chief, have you had so far with the new officers to try to get a handle?
Six months.
Six months, okay, and during this...
Actually less, actually less.
Yeah, I had, I don't like it.
And we haven't waited.
No one left.
So it's been since October.
Okay, and so what are you seeing in that period of time, as far as overtime reductions?
So right now, we're seeing a reduction of eighty-nine shifts that we didn't have to fill.
Which translates what into money?
Uh...
Because it looks like you're probably saying, "We want to be safe, because we're not sure what it's going to come to be."
The FinCom put sixty-six thousand dollars in the reserve fund, in case we weren't able to come out what our projections were going to be. We're not going to need that money, and we're probably going to come in under what our budget is going to be for this year, based on the way we've been adjusting the shifts. So we're exactly on target, exactly what we said we were going to do, and what we've proved we can do with this budget so far. To carry over into next year with the two new officers, we're just trying to, if you look at the full-time officer line, that's an actual contractual number, because it's, you know, it's the salaries, we know that number's solid, all right? But again, the overtime is still at one-sixty-eight, it's still frozen for two years, and that's still flexible. So in this case, for those of us here, line fifty-one one twenty-five, I'm sorry, I'm taking it down, fifty-one one thirty. Fifty-one one thirty.
Yep.
Police wage, regular officer, that's the biggest single item. Now, before, when you had officers doing that, it looks to me like it was six ninety. Last year, or last fiscal year, it was basically seven thirty-nine. This year, looking at a, for twenty, it was a lower appropriation. That's because that did include some overtime in it? Why did that number... And now, that number there is listed as an increase of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I was trying to figure out. That, if, that's the actual, because we have two new officers, that's the two new staffings. Gotcha, okay. So those are the two, seven ninety-four, four hundred, under the proposed department budget is the extras, and essentially, if you take that, plus contractual increases built into the contract amount there.
Yeah, the old of offices.
With two extra people, but then you subtract out what you save in overtime, which is still a, we don't know what the full answer is going to be on that, because we haven't done a full year of it yet with the offices in place. You think you're going to come out in a place where that is within what you predicted last year?
That's correct, that's right. Well, we're right on target right now, for what we figured we'd do for savings overall with the two offices.
But it's going to get cleaner as we develop more time in this, is what you're telling me. Next year, these numbers are going to look cleaner, because you'll have a year under your belt.
Exactly, the overtime will be more accurate, because we'll have two years under to base on how we have adjusted the shifts, that'll be a more accurate figure. Training, everything else will start to fall into place right now. Because right now, we're pretty much drawing from the overtime account to figure out all these other adjustments, is what we're doing. But we froze the overtime for the last two years.
Well, yeah, because you figure, you got money in the overtime account, so we can use it.
But that was the whole, that was the whole...
Having the whole point.
Yeah, that was the whole point. So if we don't spend the overtime, because you are able to do what you're projecting you can.
Yes.
We'll spend less than the one-sixty-eight, four-fifty-eight.
Yes.
And there will be further savings, but the other part you're making is that the proposed one million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand fifty-two is actually, the total police department wages and salary actually is a hundred and fifty, one million five hundred and seventy-six thousand, but that is a little below the one point six that you had offered in your model last year going forward.
Our actual, our actual figures, when we talked to the FinCom, should be one-five-nine-eight, eight-nine-seven.
Okay, so...
So it is under, it's...
Getting a little underneath.
It's a little underneath, but the other, the other increase that we, we're planning for, or we're submitting for.
Yeah.
Is an increase in our executive assistant and high-time clerical, and that's all being, that's all being placed into this too, that increase. So it's actually less than what?
And that's unfortunate, that, you know, individuals relatively minor and so on.
Yeah.
The line that we really kind of watch most closely, because it's far and away the most influential, is that fifty-one one thirty, the regular wages of the officers, that's the single biggest thing.
Well, actually, bigger than, well, I would say, we're adding a hundred and twenty-eight thousand to the two officers, and you're having good success with some of the reduction in the overtime. Are you willing to reduce that overtime line at all? Right now, it's maintaining at exactly last year's.
Yeah, but we have reduced it. We figured it, if you projected out the OPEB, it's actually, on how it should be...
No, this is targeted, it was one-sixty-eight last year. That's exactly the same as the shift.
Right, right. It came down, because this is the year that we're implementing this, this was anticipation of implementing it. Before that, it was much, much higher, because they were spending so much.
Right.
It was this expenditure that ended up driving the desire to lower. And then last year, said, "Okay, if you're going to do this, then we're going to cut your overtime in order to give you the extra salary." Now, what I understand they're saying is, while you continue to work this out, you get one more year of, shall we say, the level funded overtime, to use as kind of your adjustment grease while you get shifts worked out and so on. When it's all set, I think I'm anticipating or agreeing with you, then that should go down next year, because you won't need as much overtime, and you'll know how to make it work.
My question is, if we only had four months of having officers roughly, because they're coming on at different times. Within four months, then, in fiscal year twenty, if you could drop from two hundred and thirty-six thousand down to one-sixty-eight, you went down about seventy thousand in your overtime.
Right.
And you only had them for four months. We're not willing to put in any kind of a drop for the subsequent year, when you made that kind of great progress, just in four months?
Well, if you, if you project out our overtime according to contractual and other obligations, it's well over two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Slowly coming back.
So we did make the adjustment down to the one-sixty...
One-sixty-eight.
One-sixty-eight.
In the year, F one, fiscal year, in the current fiscal year, you're saying?
Yeah, FY twenty-one, upcoming fiscal year. Are we, are we talking, you see what I'm saying?
FY twenty-one.
In FY twenty, our overtime budget, if I'm remembering correctly, was about two hundred and eight thousand dollars, and we cut that down to one-sixty-eight.
No, I agree, and that's what I was sort of asking. Well, the difficult thing, the difficult thing...
The thing I want to hear you tell me is that we hired two more officers, and we're going to pay, we're going to pay those guys with the money that we normally had spent on overtime.
That's our anticipated goal, yes.
Okay. My anticipated goal is to get the bottom line down. Are we, are we going to get to that point, or are we just taking money out of the overtime budget and giving it to two more guys earning salary? I want, I want to see that line item down there where it says one-five-seventy-six, one-fifty-two. I want to see that number go down. Whether we use it for overtime, or manpower, or whatever, I'd like to see the overall budget go down.
Let me ask, Kathy.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. The fact of the matter is, you have to look at the projections from, without the two offices, and then, and then go from there. So if we projected out without the two offices in place, you're still looking at one-five-two-three, I think it is.
Fifty thousand dollar difference from...
Right, it's roughly a fifty thousand dollar difference. So our goal is to get that down below that level. That's our goal. Because normally, you would have, you would have spent the one-five-two-three anyways.
Well, that was your projection, not that we definitely would have spent it.
Right, but that was, that was our projection, right.
So let me ask you a question. If you don't spend, and I think Kathy told us much to you, although I mean no too, if, I'm looking at last year's appropriation of one-sixty-eight, and golly whiz, this is not bad, you spent twenty-seven thousand of it in half a year, I don't know when the spring has higher or not, but that to me says, well, gosh, possibly that one-sixty-eight could be, say, cut in half or whatever. What happens to that overtime fund if it was not spent at the end of the year?
Goes to the chase for time to give.
That's what I thought. You.
Oh, you should have said that at the beginning, all right. The way it's voted is, I think, police department salary and wages, the pocket's in the blue, that's, that number is voted, so it's voted at, let's just go with the level funded, at the one-four-four-nine, the one million four-four-nine. As long as that number doesn't go over, in terms of what's expended, doesn't go over that number, it can be moved around then, in terms of how they're spending it.
Okay, so, but only wages and salary. I don't want to use the yesterday dictators use, but it gives some freedom within the department. And so it's, it's the line on the, it's in the blue background that is the team...
That's what it's voted on at town meeting.
That's right. Now, that helps a lot, thank you very much. Fairly, I want to say, I really appreciate the effort, and a lot of thought's gone into trying to do this, you know, two extra officers, rather than lots of overtime. And I think it serves the town, not only in potentially saving some money, but if you have more officers who are trained, it gives you some extra flexibility if somebody's out, and... And I think it's sort of, if you will, can, and I assume it is, properly done enhances bench strength overall. So I think the tactic is great. We're just trying to understand the numbers.
As I said, to be honest with you, we're trying to understand the numbers a little bit.
This is a tough year because you're having to do this without sort of the full experiment completed yet. And I understand that. As long as it's not higher than last year, other than contractual increases, it's not too bad. It is higher. The question is how much of that is contractual or accounted for by other things.
One of the things to recognize too, what we're looking at here, the numbers on the line items are what's requested as far as the budget. But then there's in addition, some thirty-eight thousand in over guidelines. So that the real amount, so to speak, and you feel that those are pretty much necessary, the items that are in requested over guideline?
Yes, yes.
Those are, you're going to be in trouble operating without those, you're saying?
Yes.
Right? So the real number is what we see here in the budget plus the request in the over guidelines of about thirty-eight thousand. So, and so you have to add that to the one twenty-six and that gives you the real percent if in fact we agree and the FinCom especially agrees with accepting the over guideline. So we clearly run it at about a ten percent clip over the previous year, which is again, a big number with a big percent.
Moving from overtime to the transition of the two officers and some additional hours for the assistant.
Yes.
As I said a while ago, what I'm really interested in is what that bottom line, you know, I have a serious. However, I've also got to say that by adding two people to the force and paying, using what would normally be overtime to pay those guys, gives us better coverage because you've said for years that we don't have adequate coverage in some cases. And that's a factor that we haven't talked about here at all.
Could you just get to the overtime holiday increase? There was nothing.
What line item?
It is five one three one six. So there was like nothing in any of those, going back to FY eighteen and then we're requesting additional twelve thousand. Is that just moving it from one line item to another or what does that represent?
No, that includes, that includes the two new offices also.
But there's no, no money was in that at all since FY eighteen. So you would think it would be for existing officers and then you're adding to it.
For FY eighteen.
Oh, wait a minute. Then that's probably the line that's off.
Three one six.
Five one three one six. Yeah, I know where it says it, but it's probably.
Yeah, there was in FY eighteen.
It's actually, it is off. It should be, it should be what sixty-three, two forty-three is line. Well, you had it as overtime. Maybe, maybe.
It's going for five and eight, isn't it? It's during the holidays, five person coverage, they eat.
No, but there's no money ever in that line item since FY eighteen according to the chart.
The request, the request was for holiday overtime, but I'm wondering if it was meant to go into it and, Captain here, would you have to answer that? If it goes into the holiday regula pay, five one four two zero, where it says sixty-three thousand?
Yes.
Is that where the twelve thousand should go?
Yes.
Okay. So that was just the way the budget was presented, but I can move that.
That's also encompassing our holiday comp issue too. So with the two new officers coming on board in the holiday comp contractual obligation, it's boosted enough there for replacement costs, but we don't know if, the holiday and holiday comp, if they do not use them, they can cash them off. That's contractually speaking, they can cash it out. If we have to fill that vacancy, it's time and a half plus an additional.
Yeah. And that's fine. I wasn't questioning the amount, but the fact that there was no money ever in that budget for years.